Two thousand twenty-one at six P M. Uh, roll call Commissioner Patel, President Commissioner Hank.
Present.
Commissioner Mark, present.
Present.
Commissioner Angelina.
Present.
Present. So we have everybody here today. Uh, let's move to the pledge of Alliance. Are you gonna play the music? I mean, the chore- choreokey? Sorry, sorry, sorry.
No, I don't.
All you have to say it.
Um, I forgot.
Alright, no problem. I'll start. Then I'll start. I pledge Alliance to the flag of the United States. Into the. One nation under God. That wasn't bad. Alright.
Karaoke will be back next month.
Maybe I'll have to remind you.
Cal, I would like to make a motion to uh uh change the agenda for tonight.
Well, we uh the most you should say the item we're removing is the two thousand twenty-two compos- uh comprehensive plan.
I'd like a motion, make a motion to uh amend the agenda for tonight to remove the comprehensive two thousand plan, two thousand twenty-one plan.
All in favor?
I.
I. Okay, we've done that. You know, I need a motion for the approval of the minutes of March ten, two thousand twenty-one.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from March two thousand twenty-one.
And I'll second.
All in fav- favor?
I.
I. I should have opened it up for discussion. Sorry, guys. Uh, we have anybody signed up for public comments tonight?
Uh, no.
No? So we'll move on to the next item. I guess there's no presentation tonight?
No, there's uh no presentation tonight.
Alright, so we will move into the public hearing and let me just say a few words. Uh, all comments by proponents, opponents, or other members of the public shall be made from the Zoom platform. Any individuals making comments shall first give their name and address. This is required because an official recording of the public hearing is being made. If a person is physically challenged and requires special accommodation, the chair shall be advised. No comment shall be made from any location other than the Zoom platform. Any person making out of order comments shall be subject to removal, or in this case, we're gonna mute you. There shall be no demonstration of pros or any of audience participation during or at the conclusion of any person's presentation. These rules are intended to promote an orderly system of holding a public hearing, giving every person an opportunity to be heard and to ensure that no individual is annoyed or embarrassed by exercising his or right of speech. And I would like to go ahead and open up the public hearing at uh six oh three for proposed commercial zone A H M C seventeen dot one zero. And I would like to hand it over to staff for presentation on this, please.
Oh, thank you very much, Chair and Counselor Commission Members. I really appreciate the opportunity to have a continued hearing this evening and bring forth some additional materials for consideration of the Commission. Uh, first and foremost, the document that was in your packet and is up on the screen is the proposed changes as prepared by our consultant S C J Alliance with uh some modifications based on comments at last month's hearing. And those comments were specific to the matrix of uses by zone that are proposed. And I'm gonna go over those very briefly, and then I will also uh present what this looks like in an ordinance format in all the sections of our various codes that would be amended, and I think it would be easier to read uh for you as well as the public because it encapsulates the definition changes, the uh uh table that you see here tonight, the various ordinances that would be repealed, uh which would include our existing commercial zones and some overlay zones, and I'll go through that as well. So up on your screen uh is the table that you were looking at at the last meeting, and there were some questions from the commissioners about some of the uses and whether they should remain um a uh permitted use or not be permitted because of the dilemma in which the draft uh is presented and which it includes an L, which would signify that it was limited, but not overused category, describe what the limitations were, and that would be very difficult to administer from a planning perspective because it would be subjective for a planner to say, "Oh, gosh, you could, you could do this kind of use, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna recommend that you limit the size of your building," or "that you um can't be in this uh area unless you do these additional uh improvements on the site." So uh, one of those areas had to do with recommended uh changes to the uh drive-through, and we did meet with Commissioner uh Mark Collins about this. This was uh based on a conversation at the last hearing that included Commissioner Campobasso. Uh, and so what we've proposed is some language in here and added the footnote number eight for drive-through business. So that would be a drive-through bank or a drive-through restaurant, uh could be a drive-through pharmacy, uh which are otherwise permitted in all three of these zones, but it would allow a drive-through business when the entrance and exit uh for the drive-through was only from an arterial and not directly off of U S two. And further, that the pickup window would be required to be on the building side opposite U S two. So if you imagine in our, our proposed downtown area, if we were looking at the south side where the Yokes is, this would essentially place uh potential businesses that wanted to include a drive-through um toward the outside edge where there are some arterial streets, um rather than having a drive-through right at the front um on U S two, uh because it would require the entrance to come from an arterial. So this is some draft language um that hopefully will uh facilitate drive-through but allow for denser development eventually occur within the downtown area. And denser means that buildings are, are building to building, and you'd see multiple businesses um in that storefront type of appearance along with um some existing standards that we have in this draft that would, you know, limit the size and limit the intensity to more uh pedestrian-focused types of businesses. So that was one change. An additional change was a clarification in the table that in the upper portion, when it references the sixty-five, sixty-five, and seventy, we're actually talking about the noise contour. So we added the designator uh that signifies that this is a noise level, just to be really clear for a new reader of the code, they'd be able to see that. Uh, the other uh change that's in the table had to do with updating uh again the Ls and making some recommendations for your consideration and they're highlighted in yellow. Uh, so those included um following some recommendations from, from Mark about um not having things that are, that are just not permitted, but we would consider them through conditional use permit, which does take a little bit of time, usually several months, and does require hearing is to identify that they could happen in the C two zone as a conditional use. Uh, we also, under the motor vehicle sales, rental and repair, uh recommended that that would be permitted in the C one A transitions. Remember, that's, that's on the edges from Lawson and Lundstrom east or west toward the city limits. And that self-service uh storage or warehousing could also be a conditional use in the C two zone. And um updated the mobile food vending um provision. There was a footnote actually um that had been missed, and, and I've actually corrected this in the other table, the actual ordinance, but it actually should be footnote two um added instead of footnote four. So uh, those are the, the changes to the table. So more of the table appears as is permitted or conditional use. Um, we did not recommend changing the upper portion of the table of as a reminder because many of these uses, whether it's a dwelling unit or it's medical office or government facilities or entertainment or religious facilities. Um, the guidance from these recommendations came from our existing joint land use ordinance, which is how we achieve compatibility with Fairchild Air Force Base. And so um those are remain as they were recommended at the last hearing. So pause for a moment to see if you have any questions on this document, and then I'd like to switch over to the ordinance version and go through that and show how it's so much easier to read.
Could I ask a question, Heather?
Absolutely.
Under um, I may be reading this wrong, but under the definition section, under section one for definitions, there's one that reads dwelling, single-family detached means a single-family dwelling unit in a townhouse building. And it, is that written right? Or am I just misinterpreting what that means? Usually, aren't townhouses such that they share a common wall?
Right. So in the, in the bottom of this page, dwelling townhouse unit, now this is the new definition out of the International Residential Code. And so we were, as part of this process, trying to provide greater consistency between zoning definitions and the international codes. And in this case, it does speak to um uh in townhouse unit, the common wall uh that you're most familiar with uh in a town home. And this is also sometimes described as a row house um and can also be described as an attached. The single family.
I looked at the dwelling townhouse unit. I'm okay with that. What threw me was the dwelling, single-family. And originally, it said unattached, but then it says, you know, it says detached means a single-family dwelling unit in a townhouse building. So that's what threw me. So as, as long as everyone agrees that's written correctly, then it's, it's cockpit error on my part.
Uh, so just a clarification, are you looking at this document or are you looking at the draft ordinance?
Well, I'm looking at the one that's entitled, you know, the one that you attached at the bottom of your email, the ordinance number C nine six two.
Okay.
I just happened to, when I read through that document, I just happened to run across that definition. And I'm wondering if uh that's correct or not, so.
Sure. Let me switch over to the ordinance then.
Yeah, I don't want to make a mountain out of a molehill. I was just trying to understand if I was reading and interpreting that right.
No, absolutely. And this is a place where we would want to look for any kind of inconsistency. So the definition.
Right. There we go. You're getting closer.
So this is the definition in the ordinance, dwelling, single-family attached. Is that the one you were referring to or detached?
It's right, right below it.
A dwelling, single-family detached means a single-family dwelling unit in a townhouse building that extends from foundation to a roof. So um this should uh have some additional language in it, and I'll go back to the draft here in a minute, but it should be that a single-family detached um would not be in a townhouse. It would be a single-family dwelling unit. You're right. So it looks like some of the language got carried over from the um dwelling house, dwelling townhouse unit one. So that's a good catch. Thank you.
Well, I just, just was kind of struggling trying to figure that one out, but I appreciate it. Sorry to hold the meeting up, but.
No, not at all. This is exactly what this is. No, this is exactly what this is about. So um, let me look real quick at the other version that um and see how that's described. Boy, it is being funny tonight, I have to say. Do you keep seeing the same ordinance come up?
No, just no screen. Just you.
Okay. There we go. So, single-family detached, if you see the document before you, this is the one with the footnotes and comments from S C J. The, the proposal is for a single-family detached to be a single unit providing complete independent living facilities for one or more persons, including permanent provisions for leaving, sleeping, and eating. So that would, that should be the correct definition to go into the ordinance. And I'll make sure that that happens.
Okay, I appreciate it. Thanks. Sorry again for holding everybody.
Oh, my gosh. No, not at all. Okay, let's move over to the ordinance uh version and see if this will work for me. Perfect. Okay. Uh, did the ordinance come up for everybody on the screen?
Not yet. There it is.
Perfect. Okay. So uh for the new commissioners, every proposed change to the zoning code uh is a text amendment, and it gets an ordinance number. This is the system by which the city tracks the individual actions that take place, and these are eventually reviewed by the city council, and if they approve it, then the ordinance uh passes and it's published as part of our municipal code. So this one would be ordinance C nine sixty-two. And that couple-of-page document with the recommendations of S C J would generate over twenty pages of, of ordinance changes. So I'm, I'm gonna go through this. You can, you can actually see all of the changes that, that would be embodied, you know, plus the correction to the definition that Commissioner Bynker just brought up. So uh, the first part would be, we would update the definition section. So anything that is not underlined when it says amend in an ordinance means that it, it's existing and that anything underlined is what we would be adding. So we're, we're plucking from the S C J draft and adding to our definition section. Um, a townhouse unit, we would be amending the definitions of both single-family attached and single-family detached with the caveat that I need to pluck the correct definition and move it over. We would also be amending the T definitions to add townhouse. And again, this is based on the I R C, International Residential Code, which buildings are constructed to for townhouse units um and single-family homes as well as duplexes. So anything that is essentially a townhome, a detached, single-family, and up to a fourplex are all uh managed under the International Residential Code for building standards. The next section is to amend our zoning matrix, and this is the tool that identifies the zones and then an exhaustive list of uses in our code by zone, whether or not it's permitted. And that's what's really being added to today in the drafts, so you can see the exact changes because there were a lot of questions last hearing about, gosh, would you still be able to do this or not? So um here it is. We've updated the titles, added the C one A transition zone. And this is what it looks like. So uh, just about anything you could guess for described, described use is here. And I've added the C one A, which is the new zone, and I've put in underlying anything in the C one or the C two zone that's proposed to be amended based on the draft from S C J Alliance. Uh, for the most part, um, you'll see it's very, very, very consistent. So having an acid or chlorine manufacturing facility is not permitted in the downtown, the proposed transition area or the general commercial. And it, it goes on um very consistently through all the As um agricultural products stands. If somebody wanted to sell pumpkins in the fall, it's a permitted use today in our downtown and in general commercial and it would be added in the transition zone. Uh, goes on for uh five pages or so, but I'll just try and highlight anything that um would kind of stand out, but otherwise, when you see PPP means permitted in all three zones. And I'm going to not uh address each of those unless a commissioner would like me to stop and discuss it. Is that uh okay to move forward that way?
I guess yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So the first notable change um that I would um indicate, we'll just kind of scroll down here slowly, is that as a result of the recommendations from S C J for commercial zones, it's recommending that um car washes would not be permitted in the C one zone, uh that it would be permitted in the C one A transition area, and it would be, and of course, it already is permitted in the, in the general commercial. So um it would impact a car wash that is currently uh within this zone, and it would become what's called non-conforming. Um, so remember, the down, the purpose of a downtown is to have compact buildings that are more pedestrian in scale, drive uh or auto-oriented facilities based on the description of the zone are more intended for the general commercial C two zone. So I wanted to point that out. And then uh, let's see. Um, and this is probably a typo. Let me just highlight this. So computer programs and systems development, that should be a P. I apologize. Um, versus an N. So Zach can just make a note of that. I'll make sure that that's a P. Uh, dog pound animal rescue. So here's an example where, again, in a downtown environment, the existing code does not allow for a dog pound or animal rescue, but it, it could be potentially allowed in that transition zone, so the area moving toward but not entirely auto-oriented. So that's a recommendation. Uh, firewood sales. So this is one, again, where um the downtown doesn't permit it. When you get to the, the C two general commercial, it's only allowed by conditional use permit. Um, I would point first that my task was not to correct the existing code. Um, I'm not sure why you would want to have a firewood sale slot in a downtown city or make someone go through a public hearing to get permit to do that, but um, the recommendation is for the downtown, which is no, that the transition area, which is supposed to be still pedestrian-oriented, denser development, but starting to allow more audio-oriented uses, that this would be a no. And you can always let me know to stop somewhere if there's any questions. Let's see.
Can you just hold on one second?
Yes.
You know, there's a, there's a thing that says kennel. And I guess about six months ago, we had a lady who came into the uh planning commissioner and wanted to rezone her, uh, I think it was a daycare kennel, right, somewhere near Yokes. I can't remember exactly, but I hope that doesn't impact it. Because we did.
It is. This is not, this came up this week when we were working with our other team members, which are building department about that. It was a text amendment, and I'm, I'm sorry to say it wasn't six months ago. It was actually in uh mid twenty nineteen, Cal.
Wow. Alright, time go, time flies. But I do remember that. I do remember that.
That's right. So what was actually passed, and I, I looked at the ordinance in quite some detail today, was that um the professional service category was amended to reference a newly created animal uh grooming and, and pet care. And so this proposal um is consistent with what was adopted and that it would be uh permitted in the, the C one zone, which was the property she was looking to acquire in the transition zone as proposed to do that. But what the ordinance did not do is it did not amend the current code for purposes of kennels.
Okay.
So um, the, the action in twenty nineteen did not make kennels permitted in the C ones. And as a matter of fact, the new definition of professional service that was, was adopted, allowing the pet grooming uh specifically said kennels were excluded. So I, I'm not sure on the record if something happened at the council level to um, to ask that kennels not be allowed in the C one zone at the, at the end of that process. But the dog grooming is permitted, and this table is consistent with that. Really good, really good question. Um, and these kinds of background questions uh chair are very helpful for Zach and I because we've only been here essentially for me late twenty nineteen and for Zach since twenty twenty, and our, our records are um uh, well, just frankly, they're in disarray. So.
My timeline, my timeline was off, but that's okay.
That's okay. No, that's right. Alright. Uh, so just moving through the rest of the table, um uh, and can we put music store? That's supposed to be a P. I apologize. It's supposed to be a P, not an M. I apologize for that. Uh, let's see. Uh, nursing home convalescent center, we recommended that this be a C U P. Now, this was in the, the use table for the uh proposed zones. Uh, and a, and a lot of, this is based on J list, again, uh requires conditional use permit um in some instances for nursing homes. So we're just being consistent with that. Again, my goal isn't to correct the existing um table, but to reflect consistency with what we've done with the proposals. So a C U P would be required in the, the C one and a C U P is recommended in the C one A. Nursing homes are residential dense development um, and most of this area in the C one A and C two would probably be under J list and be required to do a C U P or may not be permitted based on that updated table that we um also include in the ordinance. I'll show that to you. Let's see. Uh, there aren't too many others that um would actually reflect a holistic change, but here's one that would. The draft that has the S C J recommendations uh calls out to have parking lots as a conditional use permit. Now, these are pay parking lots. So somebody builds a parking lot and charges for people to park in it. Um, so that's again recommended as a condition is permanent because in the downtown environment where you want to have closer buildings, you want to be more walkable, there may be a need for separate pay parking lot, but, but um you'd want to review where and how that would occur. Let's see what else. Um, here is another change. Uh, this is reflective of um and this is, this is where uh, we're in the table for the actual commercial zones, it says it has a limitation, but in, in for purposes of a use table, it would change drive-through from the downtown zone, which is today is a conditional use permit to being permitted, but with the requirement that, that the access. But with the requirement that that the access can only be from materials. Schools are proposed to be permitted. Uh here's another change uh which we just discussed in the proposal from SCJ that self-service car washes would not be permitted in the downtown. Uh this is uh service station. So again, not having auto oriented uses in the downtown, this would change it to from CUP to not permitted. The transition zone would be not. And it doesn't require a CUP actually for auto service station. Um it would be outright permitted in the C two zone. Which is exactly how they're occurring. So this was, this was a little bit of a fixed toward existing matrix because we do allow service stations all over the C two zone. Uh let's see, storage tanks below ground. That's consistent with CP, the other zones. Uh wireless communication support towers. So this is the idea of erecting. A large individual tower solely for the support of cell array. It already is a conditional use permit in the downtown recommending that it be conditional use in the transition zone, but in all other commercial zones, it would be already permitted. And that those are all the recommended changes and the impact that the proposed. Adoption of a new consolidated commercial zone would have on use tables so that there would be more consistency between the two. So I'll pause there. Any any questions? Other than the the two typos, Heather. Left.
I got one question. It's probably a moot point, but under prisons. I think there's listed uh minimum and maximum security. Now, this correctional facility here in Airway Heights, even though it's called. Airway Heights Corrections Facility, it's still considered a state prison, correct?
It is.
Washington State Prison. It it doesn't say that on the in the name, but. Does it matter if we don't? Because I know that's minimum medium. If not maximum, does it matter if we don't have medium in there? Does that even matter?
No, it's it's a correctional facility.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because see, under prison jail or institution says maximum and minimum, there's no mention of medium, but it's it doesn't matter, right?
No.
Okay.
And and I should just muddy the waters, even though we identify this as a no. Um. Prisons are an essential public facility. And if you remember from a couple of months ago, other other commissioners will remember this. We just adopted our new sighting process and that it goes to the county. So um we we say no here. Um ideally, it would be an industrial area, but. The sighting process is actually separate from us.
Okay.
I have a question, just an educational question. Uh if if for some reason we have said no right now on this chart. And if there is an existing business already in that zoning, would that be grandfathered or they'll have to move?
Uh they'd be grandfathered, so they would have rights as a grandfathered use for continuing. Uh there are even rules that allow for minor expansions, remodeling. Um the the difference though is that for some grandfathered uses are nonconforming uses. If an act of God happens. And it burns all the way to the ground, they may not be able to rebuild.
Oh, okay.
Um for for the use. That was there, or if the issue had to do uh with something. Like a setback, but for the use, they may not be able to come back if if there's an act of God.
Thank you.
Good question.
Anybody have any questions or any comments public or anybody before I close the hearing?
Um chair, can I just go through a couple?
Oh, you haven't finished. So I told you finish. Sorry.
There's a lot. I just wanted to pause.
I apologize. Sorry.
It's okay. Um so if uh so some Mark and and Cal will remember this, but their report. That came out from SCJ Alliance in January of this year during your joint plan commission and city council meeting. Had a whole series of recommendations in it and which included repealing a number of ordinances because they were. Not serving the purpose in which they were intended or. Uh the the consultant pulled those rec those standards forward into the new draft commercial zone. So. These next sections uh show all the ordinances, the existing zoning ordinances we would repeal. When we adopt this, so. The restricted commercial, otherwise known as C one, the general commercial known as C two. Several overlay zones called Village Square. SR two corridor, Hayford Square. And the mixed use overlay zone would would all be repealed and they'd be replaced with this brand new chapter that would consolidate. Uh with the descriptions of the new zones. It would have design standards which speak to the exterior requirements, which include things like. Ground floor windows, facade, uh detailing. Uh articulation of the building entrances. Uh use of materials, uh roofs, uh blank walls, you see. Uh would require walls to be treated in a way that make it look like it's it's part of the structure. Having open spaces. Uh things like sidewalks and building setbacks, parking lots. Some specific standards for mixed use, which is residential above either office or commercial. And so these are all taken from that other document that that I showed you tonight. They're just pulled forward into an ordinance format as a as a new chapter. And here it is. Here's the table uh with the changes that I went through with the updated footnotes and the corrected footnotes. Um. And of course, the drive-through business provision. Uh just going a little bit faster here. And that would be the ordinance and its fatalities. So now you can see what it would actually look like in an ordinance format and. Uh could read it straight through uh language wise. So those are, that's what we're proposing is. That this ordinance, uh the C. Nine sixty two. In its form with several typo corrections, I apologize. Uh be forwarded to the city council for consideration. So that included a couple of typos in the the matrix. And making sure that I that I pull over the correct def definition of single family detached into the draft.
And also that programming, computer programming. Need a correction.
Yes, those two, those two typos that I'm trusting Zach wrote down for me. And that that's the uh the package as a whole. Um I can also. Show you the zoning map that goes with this real quick. So just a reminder that there are some. Some map changes that we're proposing to include this. And. And this is the map when it pops up. So very minor changes. It's essentially taking. Uh half of a block uh to the west and a block and a half to the east of the downtown on both north and south sides of US two. And that would be rezoned from C two to the C one A transition. So our zoning map. Uh would be modified to reflect these changes as well as a couple more lots. Um along. Lawson uh would become either C one or C two. And that actually is the library, the city hall and the fire station and our community building that are the ones being proposed to be changed. Yeah, there would not be any other changes to commercial zoning elsewhere in the city. So. Uh we do have some C one and C two zones elsewhere in the city. They're not proposed to be changed as a result of this for purposes of the map. But certainly the development regulations we're proposing would would impact them and go with them. And that uh concludes the summary of the documents for consideration of the plan commission this evening. And I'm available for any questions from the plan commission or uh any comments or maybe from the public on the drafts.
We're open for comments, anybody? Well, thank you.
I just want to thank Heather uh for all the information that she provided uh last month when we met and got to discuss this topic uh one on one. She was very insightful to uh what all the different definitions meant and uh explained further all of these. I trust her recommendation on all these categories and uh we'll prove this as recommended.
But does this mean you're getting a new planning building? You're saying changes to the. I'm hoping you get a new planning police station and all that. I'll have money down the road for that, those changes. You're saying that one section for the planning building and the library and all through there.
The proposed zone changes to C one and C two.
Okay.
Yeah, well, that is something that uh will probably be studied in twenty twenty one into twenty. Into the fall of this year. There's already a. Proposal that's going out for consultant to at least look more intensively at fire, police and courts. And this was based on the conversation that the plan commission brought to the city council about. The demands on our systems, our police, fire, court, which are public services. And what we may need in the future. And that'll probably lead the conversation about what to do with municipal facilities in the future.
Oh, awesome.
Um so once it's under contract, the goal is to have that report out by probably this fall, maybe November.
Alright. Thank you.
Anybody else? Uh if if there's no one, if there's no one else, I'm going to close the public hearing at six forty two. And I like to open it up to discussions with the planning commissioners. And I think the first discussion is, are we okay with uh moving this with the corrections needed?
I I know I feel really comfortable with that.
If you all feel good about it, then I guess we will probably need a motion to move ordinance number. C nine six nine six two to city council for approval. So you will want us to propose with the changes.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance C nine six two based on the recommended changes tonight onto city council.
My second.
All in favor?
I.
Thank you very much, Mark and Angela, making time. To go see the staff and discussing this issue, which helps. Save time in the meetings, but also I guess uh sometimes meetings like that educate us too at the same time. So. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
Go ahead. I'm not rushing, okay? I have all the time in the world today. All right, we have in no action items tonight. The workshop has been removed. So we're going to open up for commissioners' report. If any of the commissioners have any reports or any comments. You guys are tired.
Um I was just going to say, I I sent an email to Heather. I had a meeting uh with three fifty Spokane climate change the other day or just yes, last night. And trees were brought up. And Spokane, they've Spokane done plead tree planting events and I asked. If they could help us with a tree planting event here in in Airway Heights, because I know trees are brought up. In one of the meetings that's kind of like a desert out here. We don't have enough trees and. With climate change, I'm like, my goodness, we need to plant more trees and. I'm thinking more indigenous type trees and just driving around Airway Heights today, I noticed even where the. The new, the new uh storage units are off highway two. Um those beige ones. I just can't believe how big that is. I wish those were like built away from highway two.
You mean the one across the uh the cinema, I guess, right?
Yeah, a little bit further down, yeah. Um. But I noticed along the power lines, they just have like little twig trees planted under there. And I mean, we're not going to see it in our lifetime, but it may be like fifteen years. Those trees will have to be cut down or or they might not make it. They're not indigenous. And we have to conserve water and so. We really should be planting more indigenous type plants. And anyway, uh one of the. Board members said they'd be happy to help us. And they said a good time to plant those kind of trees would be in the fall time. So we're going to work on funding and getting groups of people together and volunteers. And but of course, this would all have to be planned out and approved. By you guys and. Maybe a public meeting. I don't know.
Yeah, no, I think it's a great idea and I think I think the residents would get really behind a tree then. And it doesn't necessarily require a city approval to do it. It would depend on where the trees are proposed to be. So. Um I've also participated in in managed several tree planting events for Spokane. We did a, we did a ten thousand tree initiative.
Okay.
Uh several years ago and uh there are some great resources for, you know, obtaining the trees. Um probably you some questions to to discuss if you want this to be. Uh something that the the commission works on at the city would be. Uh concentrating on private versus public property. Um and then what what the goal is and what the the material is. So for example. In the tree planting events that that I uh worked with, we we did. A variety of projects uh twice out at the uh conservation park area. That's out off of Summit Boulevard. That was a a volunteer event that had some nonprofits organized in. The event with us and those were conservation uh service trees because they were just little ponderosa plugs, you know, so they're about that big.
Okay.
Planted uh in that area. Um. The other one was um actually doing trees at publicly owned property. Um those can be a little bit more complicated if you choose big. Uh starter material because of the need for irrigation. So probably just some some kind of questions to flush out. Um that we can certainly help you with the answers on as you work toward that. But yeah, that's a, that's a great idea. I think. Um that's awesome. Another thing that worked in Spokane. Is that there's a foundation that it's it's all paperless. It allows for residents to go and sign up and get a tree. They only have a certain number every year. They're they're decent sized, like three quarter inch caliper deciduous trees. Um they don't have an emphasis on native plants, but it is a tree. And homeowners can sign up and get the tree. It gets delivered to their house and and then they install it on their own property.
Nice.
And that's through, that connection was through, I think it's the Arbiter Arbor Day Foundation, the National Arbor Day Foundation, but. Uh Angel Spell was Spokane Urban Forestry has the the background information on that program and who they they go through. So. Again, kind of some questions about uh what the the goal is, um where it would be and we can certainly help you with that.
Oh, yes, that'd be great. Maybe I can set up a meeting with um Brian um with three fifty and and Heather and whoever else wants to join us. In a couple of weeks, maybe.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
It'll be great. I think people of the community, if they see this kind of work happening in the area this year. They will feel very encouraged that something is happening to improve their community. Uh it's a great idea.
Yeah, absolutely. People love trees. They really do.
Yeah.
That's what my wife complains when she first came from Georgia. There's the trees.
You know, e- even on my street, I live on Third and Lawson and. You know, my house was built in twenty fifteen, but I have two, but they're they're dying. I mean, I. I mean, I noticed a lot of the trees, they're not making it. But then I look around and I see dwarf blue spruce, our little pines and those type of trees that are kind of scattered throughout. And they were, they're doing just fine. So, anyway, it got me thinking. And then I was at a conference and we had a forestry person there. And he was showing us how the trees are dying, especially along the freeways and the highways. And I started really looking at trees and thinking, geez, we need to... And for the, the heating up of the earth, we just need to be planting them like crazy.
Yeah, no, it's a great idea. I was certainly happy to help.
Oh, thank you so much, Heather.
Oh, yeah.
That's great. You've already done this before.
Did 10,000 and we met the goal.
Oh, my gosh, that's very cool.
Yeah, it was, it was very interesting. It was very interesting. A lot of enthusiasm for the project. But logistically, especially when you're, you're putting in thousands of seedlings.
Yeah.
Yeah, that can be difficult.
That's a workout.
Yeah, I think that was Boy Scouts that was the partner, the nonprofit partner on that.
Oh, very cool.
America. And apologize, my, the sun is moving. That's great. That's, that's great.
I'm running, I'm taking notes. Boy Scouts and Girl Scout volunteers.
Heather, can I ask a quick question of you? Has anyone from the city of Airway Heights had any discussion at all with the city of Issaquah regarding their TIG water filtration system for PFOS and contamination?
Good question.
I don't have the answer to that question. That would be a Kevin Anderson question. But we'd be happy to, to convey that to him and, and see if he has reached out to them.
Well, you know, it's, it's a bit difficult for me because I don't know what all you've discussed and what you've done. And you've probably covered a tremendous amount of ground on this. But I thought it might be, because you know, I, I, I'm assuming that all of us sent the email to all the senators, you know, asking them to maintain the $16 million state capital budget for Airway Heights drilling a new well. But the city of Issaquah was faced with pretty much the same problem with the city of Airway Heights with respect to PFOS contamination of their wells four and five. And so, they, I think they initially leased the system and they installed a TIG filtration system. And it's kind of like the, the charcoal looking stuff is a coconut shell. And they've had this, this filtration system exceeded their expectations. They don't have PFOS now in their water. So, I thought maybe it might be worth a discussion if it hasn't already taken place. You know, to just sort of benchmark cost and that sort of thing, results and test results and that sort of thing. So, I thought maybe Albert Tripp might have, might possibly have participated something like that. And I scooted him an email. I think I copied Calen, but I haven't heard back yet. So, I, I don't know what the status of that is, but it's sure worth a phone call, I think.
Yeah, and I, I would agree. I just don't have the background of the research that they did around the systems. That's a project that Kevin Anderson's leading. And I would just add that Albert was unexpectedly out of the office for two weeks.
Oh.
And recently, and just came back, I think last week was his first week back in the office. So, he may be catching up on emails that he received. He was not, he was not unless it was an emergency responding.
Well, I, no, I suspected something was up. I didn't know what, but no big shakes. I just thought I'd pass that information along in the event that no one had talked to him. Because I, I definitely think it's worth a phone call, you know.
Maybe we can reach out to Kevin, Kevin Anderson directly.
We can, you can either contact Kevin Anderson directly or we can forward it, an inquiry to Kevin on your behalf.
I'd be happy to contact Kevin. No problem. Thank you very much.
Oh, absolutely.
Oh, that's great. That is such a huge issue. And our house got tested for PFOS. And of course, we're quite positive. Yeah, so I'm, kind of makes me nervous. And then I know, I don't know if we can talk about it here, but I know a lot of folks are getting on a litigation lawsuit. And it's pretty tough trying to get a lawyer.
Well, that material is really dangerous.
It is. Yeah, it is scary. I, I would, I would really like to, to learn more about this too. Maybe you can see me too.
Some, some of the folks that you talk with, not to belabor this issue, but some of the folks that you talk to, and I'm talking about like medical doctors and so forth, and I'm sure other scientists. You know, just to illustrate, some say that if you, if you put three eye drops worth of PFOS material into an Olympic-sized pool, it renders the water bad. You, you shouldn't be drinking it. That small of a quantity. Now, there's 660,400 gallons of water in an Olympic pool, just to give you an idea. So, it's, it's bad stuff, you know, and it has a cumulative effect, a chronic effect over time. So, if we can get the water cleaned up here in the city of Airway Heights, that sure gives us a good foundation to move forward.
Did we open back up those wells that had all the PFOS in it? I thought we were still on Spokane's water.
We're on Spokane water, but my understanding is, is that in the summer, during peak use, they will open up that one well over here. I don't know what number it is, but to augment the water. But that's why I'm suggesting that if, if the funding doesn't come through, even though we're, there's supposedly the $16 million in the state capital budget. Hopefully, we get that. I think the original asking number was 22 million. But, but if something goes sideways with that, you know, maybe that filtering system might possibly be an option for Airway Heights. So, yeah, I'll get ahold of Kevin and pass that information along. And he may already know about it, but I'll touch base with him and just see if, you know, if they've had a discussion about it. Because evidently, this thing's doing wonders for the city of Issaquah.
That's great. That's a great positive story. Let me just clarify one thing that I understand about the well in the summer is it's only utilized for irrigation purposes. It's not put into the potable water supply.
That, that's what, yeah, I should have qualified that statement. But I know it does get opened back up to augment, because everybody's watering and doing all that sort of stuff.
So then our, so our gardening could possibly get contaminated or?
Well, it, it shouldn't be, because that well is the well that they put the filtration system on. That, that the Department of Defense was testing. And they put that same system on private wells that were shown to be contaminated. So, even though it's being utilized for irrigation, it is still going through a filtration system that's being monitored.
Okay.
So, it's important to share that information, because we are, we are continuing to battle as a community, the impression that we are serving contaminated water, even though the city does have cross-agreements and the wells that are providing the water are in a separate aquifer that, that are available to the city of Spokane.
Good information. Anybody else? Anything? Mark? No? All right, I'm going to close the commissioner's report and let's move to staff reports. It's Heather or Zach?
Zach, you want to go first?
Um, yeah, I mean, I don't have a ton of stuff. I did want to touch on. And now that I think about it, we probably should have done a presentation this week, but we didn't. So, we'll probably do one next month. But Heather and I have been working with the Complete Streets Academy for a little over a year now, minus a big chunk there due to COVID. But we're working with the city of Arlington. We're also working with the city of Wenatchee. And essentially, the idea is to develop some street mitigation for our street coming and just creating areas with blockability and anything like, you know, that kind of thing. So, we actually presented on this, not last week, but the week before with our groups. We've done a site selection process. So, we're going to be looking at King Street between Highway 2 and 6 Avenue. So, along the, the west side of Sunset Elementary and the park there to do some, some pop-up. Sorry, my alarm is going up. Do some, some pop-up street mitigation in terms of... We don't have specifics on what we're going to do yet. But we are going to be involving you guys, asking some questions, getting feedback from both you and the City Council on that. So, just a heads up, that's probably coming down the pipeline there. Other than that, Heather had a really calm week last week, but so far, things are revving up. So, I was gone last week, so.
Oh, I saw her send the emails out, that's why.
Things are picking up. As it gets warmer, development is picking up. We're getting all sorts of calls. We have all sorts of projects going, so, so we're busy. And we're just, we're, we're excited to hit summer and just get going with the development communities.
Zach, why don't you tell them about the website, the GIS website and the connection to the building permits?
Oh, yeah, so I, I guess I told City Council, I don't know if I told you guys. So, the GIS site that was three or four months ago. I mean, it's hard, because we only meet once a month, so my timeline is so different with you guys. But that is actually launched as of two weeks ago. So, that is available on the city of Airway Heights website under Planning. There's a tab for maps and GIS. On maps and GIS, there is a series of static maps. They're all new and fancy and nice. There's also a button there, a big button you can't miss it, that takes you to an external site, which is our new GIS page. All of our zoning information, our land use information, utilities information. There's even a, a map there for snowplow routes. Just because that's, that's something that we saw the community was concerned about over the winter. And it didn't take a ton of time to do. So, that's all available. We also have a, a tool that I can't take credit for, because I didn't build it. But it was, essentially, there is a geospatial connection to our permitting system. And what that does is allows you to see all of the active building permits, all of the active land use action permits, any permit we have going on in the city, you can see those as they develop in real time. So, there is a link to that through our GIS site is also available on the Building Department page on the, on the website there. So, yeah, that, that's been a huge project we've been working on for a long time. And this is kind of just the phase one, so we're rolling it out and we're really excited. So, I, I know a lot of you have seen it before, because you're, you know, kind of the beta testers for that. So, appreciate that. But it is now publicly available, so if you have a second, swing by.
Nice. Good job, Zach.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, it looks really nice. And it seamless in the connection to the map for the building permit data. And so, if you, if you run into anybody in the development community or otherwise, you know, please share that information. That's a huge leap forward for Airway Heights for a couple of reasons. I mean, it just, it just shows we're progressing with having information available to the public. It makes it easier to do business in our city. And we'll be adding more information. It'll be more convenient to the public as they need that. Snowplow information is one example. We'll be working over the next year to add a layer that is historic information on property and, on specific zoning permit application data. So, we have some record of what happened, like Cal mentioned.
Getting a, getting a continuous record of everything is, is a big, big deal. And it's, it's going to be tricky. And just designing that, that database, I'm already having issues with how I'm going to do that. But that's, that's the overall end game. Another really cool example of what we can do with our GIS system is the airport overlay zone information that Heather presented to you guys, I believe it was last month. That's already up and available on the GIS site. So, that's something where, you know, we got comments from SIA about them. Oh, we had to have it on our static map, but it wasn't passed yet. And, you know, we were able to just throw it up and it's there and it's done. So, having that, you know, dynamic map that's accessible and interchangeable, we don't have to make a big deal about it every two years is also going to be really nice. So, yeah, we're really excited.
Well, that's great, Zach. Those are all really great updates. I'm just so proud of Zach. He's just done a great job since joining us, you know, just a year ago.
He's going to get a big raise.
He's getting more responsibility too.
Well, you know what, though? This sort of thing, which is awesome, I took a look at it too, and I think it's great. But you know, that's what so many people in the community want from city government is transparency. What are you guys doing? Even though they don't tune in all the time, they still seem to want to know, what are you guys up to, you know?
Exactly, exactly. Well, we are, as we've mentioned, we've been updating the website. So, we've been putting the agendas onto the website. We'll also start putting packets in the future as we work on that. The minutes are already there. So, we'll have a year's worth of that material, so that Plan Commission is much more transparent. And we're continually making sure that we're posting the documents that the Plan Commission is looking at. We've added two pages, one Subbury Plans and one Draft Municipal Codes, so that when we push it out through Facebook or it goes out in the quarterly newsletter, there's a link that tells people where it is, they can find it. It's out there at the beginning of these meetings, so people, if they're interested, can take a look at it. So, we'll keep working on increasing the transparency of our process with the commission moving forward. So, speaking of commission, just a reminder that we're recruiting for another Plan Commission member. That application period goes through April 30th. I've heard that we might have some applications thus far. We are looking for a city resident for this particular position. They would be stepping in and filling Sean's vacant position. So, we'll, I think, just as a question, do you want to follow the same process that you did previously to have an opportunity to interview the candidates and make a recommendation to the City Council? Or is there some, some way you would like to change that process? That was the first time we'd ever done anything like that. You'd never met the commission applicants before?
I think like speaking for myself, I'm not going to speak for Cal, but I feel like I was a little confused going into that, what we were expected to do. Was it an interview or an introduction? What were we actually supposed to be doing? So, I didn't feel comfortable doing anything.
But I think the process was pretty good, that we got to see the person. And even myself, you know, we had to make a decision to recommend one person out of, I guess, three candidates. And I think that's where we all stumbled, that we were not ready to make the recommendation or pick one person, so the other two don't feel bad or whatever the reason could be behind it.
That's a fair point, Cal.
When, when these applicants throw their applications in for a position like this position number two that's vacant, who actually looks at these and, and sort of looks at their qualifications? Who is that?
All of us.
All of us?
Yeah, the, so the staff looks at it, the commission members look at that, the City Council looks at it, the mayor looks at it.
Okay, so it's, it's viewed by everybody?
Yes, the applications are viewed by everybody. And the, the process has been very different in the past. Ooh, there we go. Maybe I'll find a spot without the sun. Where in the past, it's, it's, as I understand, been limited to only one applicant. And so, it's been very automatic with the City Council appointing that person if they're qualified.
I see.
And qualifications include things, you know, like residency. This was the first time, as I understand, in years that we had multiple applications. And it looks like we'll have multiple applications again. And so, we're kind of feeling our way through how the commission would like to be involved in that process and make a recommendation to the council. And I'm, I'm hearing feedbacks today of what you'd like to maybe see a little bit different. And this would be the time to maybe have thoughts that you'd like to move forward with about how to conduct that process.
I think we should have some kind of a criteria that all of us are based on the same criteria to make a decision. Because, you know, my perception of somebody's qualification could be different than Mark's perception or Hank's or anybody's, right? So, maybe first of all, I think we need to have some kind of a basic criteria. And we go through that criteria and we kind of give it a point system or whatever it is, so that we're not hurting anybody's feelings or nobody's getting upset about it, you know, because...
You're such a sensitive guy, Cal.
I am, because I, I, look, if you get the citizens upset, it causes problems for everybody. I am, because I, I, look, if you get the citizens upset, it causes problems for everybody. We work for them, we, we present them, so. I just wanna make sure that we have some kind of a baseline or a guideline, or we can all come up with something, but it's hard to look at. You know, three applicants and decide, okay, which one should I pick? On what criteria, you know, I mean.
Sure. Ordinarily, ordinarily, when people submit applications for a given position, right? I mean, somebody sifts through them all, like, are these people really qualified, or they just think they're qualified? And then when you get a handful of applicants that are, that are deemed qualified, then. You wanna interview them to see if they're a good fit, like, do I really wanna work with Cal or what, you know? So I kinda like the idea of maybe each of us having just a, a question to ask them, you know? Obviously, we gotta ask them all the same questions. But it, it gives you a little bit of a feel for who you might be working with on the committee, you know?
No, which is important, which is important, because.
Yeah.
We, right, if, you know, like they say, if we all can work together as a team. And, 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 and make decisions, it's great. If you get one person who's gonna question everything, everything Heather does, they question it. We had one guy like that. About three and a half years ago. And he joined the planning commissioner. He was an engineer, a professional engineer.
Okay.
And every time Derek brought something to the table, this guy tore him apart. So if I was Derek, I would just feel like I don't wanna go to the next meeting. Finally, he quit, but the thing is, everything we warded on, he didn't wort on anything. He questioned every action. And it kind of makes the system fall apart.
Yeah. And you know. Well, you, you hit the nail right on the head. I mean, each of us are making so much money being on the planning commission, right?
Yes.
And if you've got one bad actor that's just beating somebody up or everybody, that, that makes for a long night, you know?
I, I think it's important that we know who the team players are and.
Yeah.
We should be able to work with each other.
Right, I agree.
We all have opinions, we all have comments, we respect that. But you can't be the guy who's gonna slow everything down. Just because you know more. No, that's not true. But this other guy's episode was, was something unique. Even I wanted to quit the planning commission.
We're really glad you didn't, Cal.
It was annoying. It was annoying because you go into a meeting, right? Instead of getting anything done, it was just a question. Everything was a question.
He was getting something done. Um, Heather, going back to the, the thing though, the, was very difficult with that, was we had applicants that were not qualified. And it was almost like we were being put on the spot about that, when we don't make the rules, we have nothing to do with that. And we shouldn't have even been talking to people that weren't residents.
That's a true story. Their, their name should never have been submitted right out of the starting gates. They didn't qualify.
That should be criteria number one. Yeah, whatever the requirement is.
It is a criteria and uh, at least two of the applicants were advised that they did not meet the minimum qualifications and they. They wanted to proceed uh with submitting their application. So. What we can do this next time, and I'll speak with Stanley Schwartz, our legal counsel, and Albert Tripp, the city manager. Uh, which would be that we'll advise anybody who doesn't meet the minimum qualification of residency, we'll advise them that will hold the application for another opening. Which they could be qualified for. Um, so that their. Their name will be identified, you know, they'll certainly be recognized, but. Understandably, they may not get to participate in other parts of the process because they don't meet the, the qualifications. So. Just a little background, both of them wanted to move forward.
Put on the spot right at that moment.
Hmm. Yep. Okay, that's very fair. We can work with that. Uh, so the, the, the next piece is you asked about criteria. Um. And potentially some questions. And. Did you want to uh? Kind of develop that now? Because we potentially are bringing them in. In May uh for those names and potentially the opportunity. So do you want to develop some criteria? In kind of short order, kind of talking about it, and then ultimately, I think we need to answer that next question that Cal brought up, which is. Do you wanna make a recommendation, or do you simply want them to uh? Introduce themselves and have an opportunity to learn more about them and, and not comment about. Your preference of one person over another?
Let me ask you a question. Um, last time we moved it to the city council. How did the city council, excuse me? How did the city council act on making that decision?
Well, An- Angelina is here. She is the, the person, the result of the decision, and it was very easy, because at the time. Uh, Angelina was the only person who met the minimum qualifications.
I, I suggest that we, we should recommend a person to city council because they're gonna be working with us, but I think as a group. Maybe we can all come up with like ten questions that we think should be asked or should be gauged equally, you know?
I agree.
I, we can start an email. I don't know if we're allowed to do that. Or we have to have a meeting. I don't know what the rules are, but I think collectively as a group. We should, we should pick maybe ten questions, and all the ten questions should be the same. So if, if Mark, for example, or Hank or I. Gauge that person that question, I should be able to give it a point system. When we add up the point system and be very fair, if the points, we decide that certain, whoever gets the highest point is our recommendation, we should, we should proceed that way. Rather than pick somebody by looking at the face.
Cal, I, I agree with using a matrix style, like to, to ask questions, but I think that's still subjective in the end when we're putting points on it. So I don't know if using points to choose somebody would be a, the fair representation. I think we should just discuss it as a group and if we.
And then just vote, I guess.
Yeah, and if we can't have agreement there, then the city council can make the decision for us.
That's fair. We can probably take a vote individually and, and, and see. Who has the most votes, I guess. That also lets us make some. Extra decisions that we need to look at, you know? That's good.
So the council in this last. Uh. Appointment of council members to fill the vacancies, like the council. Reviewed the application materials and they uh. Recommended. Um. Based on a one, two, three, you know, this is my first pick, this is my second pick, this is my third pick. And then, excuse me, I'm hiccups. Um. The city clerk just tracked it, and then whoever had the most. Ones, you know. Made it to the final interview for the council, and so it could be that, that simple. Um. For, for purposes of. You know, voting on, on. Who you would uh wanna recommend moving forward. And it was transparent, it was front of, it's front of the candidates, it wasn't um a closed meeting. But if you do want to do something where you discuss and agree on a set of questions. We would either need to do that during this meeting, or we'll have to do a special meeting notice and bring everybody back together between now and, and the May meeting, because. We're not able to have um you all vote. Uh. Without having a special meeting, you're, you, we can't, that's one of the reasons why we can't have group emails. Where you're communicating back to each other. Um, is because of the open public meetings, which is the plug that everybody needs to do their open public meetings training. It's a five-minute video. With the uh Secretary of State, and I can resend that link to everybody. Um, everybody should take it and sign the declaration that they've taken it. And I'll, I'll forward it to you again, but um. If you wanna have another meeting, we can set it up.
What do you guys wanna do? I mean, we can decide now, too.
I, I feel like collectively, we can come up with some questions rather quickly.
Then what are the, did, what are there, is there like a list of questions? There was a list of questions you had before, already set up?
No, never. It's never, there hasn't been a criteria already.
Oh.
Cause there's always one person who applies.
Oh, okay.
But now the city, the city is growing and I think we're becoming popular as planning commissioners. Everybody wants to join this now, you know?
Well, that's because the pay's not high enough.
It's part of the in crowd.
You, let me, let me, let me just throw one question. You have a candidate. How, how do you go about probably deciding whether he'll fit the planning commissioner or not? Basically, do you look at his educational background, his working? So. It's gonna be difficult if you have three people. Which look similar background, how do you pick which one you wanna work with?
It, it would be unlikely that you would have multiple candidates with the same background. Um, so. You just from the application materials, y- you'll be able to see the. Um, volunteer activities that they've been involved with, their professional um. Responsibilities and. Uh, be able to see that. And if there's, if you wanted to go off of a point system, you know, you can. You could do that, but um, questions. That you asked at the last. Uh, set of candidates, I think were related to um. You know, how comfortable are you with uh being in a meeting where there might be some hard questions, or someone might be hostile? Um, you know, kind of situational, how would you react? How would you participate? Cal could uses. His scenario of, you know, here's some new material, you know, how open are you to um? You know, different approach uh on a land use based decision, or. You know, have you personally had a conflict with a development proposal be previously, and how did you address it on a professional or personal level, depending on if they're an engineer, or if they were. A homeowner or a business owner. Um, so those are the type of questions that you could ask. That are related to the job. Um. Related to the experiences that you've had, like. You know, long hours, lots of commitment to reading, you know, conflict uh or irritated citizens. Those could be some suggestions.
I, I like, I like the, the way you put those questions just now. I think it kind of gives me a different perspective now. So I, I, I think if we all probably pick up on five, six questions and ask what she just suggested. And then just put one, two, and three, I think that would probably be the best way to do this. Instead of making it complicated, like I said it earlier. Because, you know, it's not that we have a position open every month. So I, I, I think your, Heather, your suggestion is pretty good. It gives me a different perspective now.
Oh, thank you. I'm not just gonna take credit, I'm just stealing from what.
Nobody gives us.
I've seen before, from other, other discussions and debates. And from our own council, how they handled the last appointment process, so. Just really.
Everybody else feels. Mark, come on.
No, I, I agree with all that. I feel like we. I, I wanna treat this no different than I would an interview. I'm going in there asking questions that's gonna elicit a response, so I can see if that person's gonna work well with myself. That's the way I would like to approach it.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is uh each commissioner puts together some questions. You'll ask each candidate the same question. And then at the end of the process. Uh, publicly, we will go through um each commissioner saying, here's my number one candidate, number two cabinet, number three cabinet candidate. Will aggregate the total scores, and then whoever scores. The, the lowest, I guess, because if you add ones together, they're a lower number, that will be your recommended candidate?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that would work better.
Okay, we can do that. Right, it sounds good. Uh, let's see, so we will be coming back uh just to move on um. The conference of plan timely discussion with the group. Uh, we're hoping to have a contract with uh two consultants by the beginning of May, so I just wanna make sure that we. Have the updated scopes uh in hand for the planning commission meeting next month, before we go in detail and make that public. But we're super excited by the recommendations uh to move forward. Um, then, let's see, um, I wanted to just kind of, as a final comment, say. Very much wanna thank the planning commission. You did great work over this last year, and I just wanna pause and, and think about how we're going to celebrate. Because the council passed the last of the ordinances. And we are in growth management compliance.
Nice.
Uh, it took, I think it counted, it took about fifteen months, but um. We are there and we are in compliance all the way until twenty twenty-five.
Nice.
Thank you. Stuff, stuff did a lot of background work on that, so thank you, Heather and Zach.
Yes, thank you.
For making the city current.
Oh, thank you. That was, that was a lot of meetings, um, a lot of hours. I think Zach was counting back when, when you all were doing the planning commission hearing starting last February, and we had fifty people. Um. Cause we had entered. It already entered into uh lockdown and we were on Zoom. Uh, that's, you know. That's a lot of people, and you know, we probably don't get a lot of people.
But I think Zoom encouraged more people to join the meetings. That's what my observation was.
Yeah, and there were some controversial conversations that were part of the discussion that you all were doing. Um, critical areas. Was very technical, Zach did a great job of, of describing that, and then updating the wetlands provisions and. You know, whether to do a new inventory or do a, the site-based, you know, um checklist. I mean, those, there's a lot of questions, so. I hate for so much work to go by and not spend a few moments just recognizing your, your dedication and commitment to the community. All the hours of time it took to do the review and participate in, in helping the city get to this point. And it's. It's significant um in that you have a framework to move forward. The city's eligible for grant opportunities for parks and public works projects, so. Great job. This is what the high pay is all about. Is uh helping positions community in, in a better place and charter, charter path forward.
It's good, it's teamwork.
Yeah, it definitely is. This city is uh working very well collectively right now.
Absolutely, absolutely. Well, that was just, I just wanted to end it on a happy note and say thank you.
Thank you very much. I don't know, everybody done? I don't wanna rush, I don't wanna rush.
It sounds like you wanna rush, Cal.
I, to the, towards the end.
You got stuff to do, I get it.
Okay, I'm gonna go, if there's no further comments or uh any discussions, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at uh seven twenty-seven.
Thanks, Cal.
PM. Thank you, everybody.
Have a good evening.
To meetings?